The NSA Ludo will be the one that goes first.
Okay.
No changes for me, thank you.
All right. I'm sorry, I'm a tiny bit confused today. All right. So was there was something that you wanted me to do first, though, right Kathy?
Um, just before we go to the public hearings, if you could pull the nine one one agreement off of the consent agenda, just so that Joe can have a moment to speak to it. And that can be after Mimi's presentation.
Okay, all right, remind me to do that. All right.
Do my best.
All right, thank you. So the the vaccination update is the COVID update, right?
Yes.
Cool. All right. Why don't we go there? Thank you, Dr. McDonald for being here. Welcome and the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. This is Dr. Mimi McDonald, Health Officer for North Central Public Health District, serving Wasco, Sherman, and Gillum. Writing just a very brief COVID nineteen update today. What we're looking at and seeing on the screen right here is the number of cases per week from about November of last year. So you can see how, you know, we had this big surge because of the Delta variant. With kind of our highest numbers happening in mid-June, but then again, you know, in September, still having very high numbers in terms of cases per week. Now, for the past two weeks, it's certainly been lower than that high of approximately one hundred and fifty cases within a week. You know, but we're not out of the woods yet. We're still having almost one hundred cases last week in Wasco County alone. So there's still transmission because of that Delta variant. All right, next, the good news, Oregon hospitalizations related to COVID are definitely down. That's that big line on the top is total hospitalizations, middle line is folks who are using ICU beds. And then the bottom line is people who are on ventilators. So one thing that I would say about this, though, is yes, absolutely, hospitalizations are down across the state, which is fantastic. One thing to know, though, that our hospitals in Region Six, so including Providence Memorial and Mid-Columbia Medical Center, are incredibly busy and full. Yesterday, there were zero out of ten ICU beds available. And not that they were all taking up with COVID patients, but just to give you a sense of how full our hospitals are and kind of the strain under which our hospital system is is working. So next slide, please. All right, so this is the vaccine update, and I'm trying, hopefully, this will clarify some things. So I'm going to start off with the things that are approved, and you can get this type of vaccine in Oregon. So both for Pfizer and Moderna, and we're talking about, you know, kind of additional doses compared to the original series. Pfizer and Moderna doses, dose number three, so that's for people who are in an immunocompromised state that's been approved and that is available. The Pfizer booster, so this is for people who are sixty-five and up, people who have significant health conditions or work in a field which exposes them frequently to COVID, such as education or the healthcare. If you receive a Pfizer vaccine for your series, and it's been six months since your second dose, Pfizer booster is available right this minute, you can get it. All right. So those are the big green checkmarks, the ones that are kind of green and white. Those are the ones that are on the docket and are being evaluated now. The Moderna booster, the Johnson and Johnson booster, and also what they're calling the mix and match booster. So in other words, if you had gotten one type of the series, you could potentially be available to get another one. Those are set to be, they've been reviewed by the FDA, and they're set to be reviewed by the ACIP, which is the next step before we get final approval through the CDC and then eventually through the state. And then what's happening with the Pfizer vaccine for ages five to eleven, that hasn't yet been sent, well, pardon me, it's been sent to the FDA for approval, and it will be reviewed on October twenty-sixth. So the next slide that we have, this is just, I know it's a lot of initials, but I think sometimes it's helpful to know, how does this all work? So, and you know, the drug company collects all the information and then submits the data. First, it goes to the FDA, and then the FDA makes a recommendation. Next, and this is where kind of those boosters are, the Moderna booster, the J and J booster, and then the mix and match. Then it goes to the CDC's Advisory Committee, also known as ACIP. And then the CDC Director makes a recommendation, sends it back our way to the Western States Review, and then Oregon Governor reviews it and gives the final approval from the OHA. Now, those, you know, kind of the final steps, the CDC and then the Western States and the OHA approval, that happens within the space of a week, because they know when all these meetings are. So the turnaround time is pretty quick. So the, and just so you know, for those boosters, Moderna, Johnson and Johnson, and Nixon Match, they're actually being reviewed tomorrow at the CDC, the ACIP. So we should hear information probably by the end of the day tomorrow, tomorrow's Thursday, maybe by Friday. So next slide. Okay, just some brief notes on kind of what we think is projected, what's coming down the pike in terms of the pandemic. So this chart, and this is from OHSU, and you can just Google OHSU model projections, you can come up with this information. What it's looking at, and I'm sorry, because I know the numbers are small, that is total population of Oregon, so you know, a little over four million. The orange part is way back in the day when everyone was susceptible to COVID. So that's why the whole, everything looked orange, and as we move out over time, more people are vaccinated, which is blue. Some people are both vaccinated and have been infected, which is the gray, and then the green is folks who've been infected. And so that is what gets us to that level of what, you know, we talk about that herd immunity. So right now, with, based on this projection, it's looking like kind of around the Christmas is when Oregon, so this is the state in general, not necessarily our region, is anticipated to be at about eighty-five percent immunity. This is from the Delta variant, which again has been the predominant strain. So next slide, and this is just how good OHSU is at doing their forecasts. So the black line is what they have forecasted, and this starts way back in February of two thousand and twenty, and it goes all the way out to March of two thousand and twenty-two, what they're projecting. So the black line is the model, the red line is what actually happens. So as you can see, they're pretty spot on. The thing that I'd like us to pay attention to, so you can see kind of on the right-hand side, where the red line stops, because that's where we are today, because we know kind of how, you know, we know what's happening. Now, if you look as you go down to the right, you know, we're going to get back to kind of the around the Fourth of July numbers. We actually wouldn't get to that spot until sometime in January. You can see it doesn't go down as steeply. Now, this is just a model based on projections of how people will behave. So that's the part where we get to be in charge of it. So if people are, if more people than projected get vaccinated, and if people are able to continue doing their good practices of wearing masks and being socially distanced, we'll get there a lot sooner. So, you know, we're in charge of what happens with this pandemic. If that doesn't happen, if fewer people than projected get vaccinated, and if everyone is just, and I totally understand being exhausted with all of these measures, but if people kind of stop being worried and just completely give up trying to do any sort of mitigation, it's going to take longer to get back to those lower levels. So that's just, that's it. That's my last slide. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Questions for Mimi? And and just a reminder, if folks are here and you have a question that you'd like to have considered, then if you could put it in the chat, that would be the best way to get it. And if we can't, can't get it there because you're on the phone, then we can get to you later. But commissioners, do you have anything? Go ahead, Kathy.
Hi, good morning, Dr. McDonald. Thank you. Just a question I have, is there about the mix and match? Is there any advantage or recommendation that if you had a Moderna, for instance, is it better to get a Pfizer or J and J or stick with Moderna, or do we just not know yet?
Right. Well, I think that's what, that's the data that they're evaluating, and it some of it, it might be that with Johnson and Johnson, people might be better off if they get either Moderna or Pfizer. But that's kind of, those, those are absolutely the discussions that are being held. So in the instance of that, the organization that pulled all that data together is National Institutes of Health. Now, they don't have as much data, because you know, that has, it's sort of only happening kind of by a little bit of a fluke or things like that. So just looking at that information and projections, so we should know a lot more kind of the end of this week.
Okay, so you think there might be a recommendation of sorts, that which one you?
Yeah, either, either to do it or that it's acceptable. If that makes sense, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and the second question I have is the herd immunity. You mentioned in Oregon, but not necessarily here. And that's where I think that the data is somewhat skewed, maybe because the people in more of the urban areas have higher vaccination rates than maybe we do out here. So that's a little bit concerning when we have information out there that Oregon's reached herd immunity. But really, that may not be the case in some of the other counties. So I'm wondering, you know, how we message that so that, you know, people will keep, you know, wearing the masks and social distancing and getting vaccinated, even, you know, I hope that it's not out there that Oregon's good, you know. And we don't need to do this anymore, because we've reached what people understand as herd immunity, so.
Yeah, no, it's, it's true. I mean, we don't live in the entire state of Oregon all the time. We live where we live. We interact closely with the people that we interact with, and that is a really good point. And it is a challenge, because on the one hand, you don't want people to feel hopeless, that things won't ever get better. And I guess that's why I'm trying to stress that, you know, we get to choose what happens. And so people can choose to have the, you know, reach herd immunity sooner or later, and our behaviors are definitely going to change when that happens. So encouraging everyone in our region to really be thoughtful of one another and making sure that you're doing the best practices and getting vaccinated and keeping up your, you know, masking and social distancing.
Yeah, thank you. And just one last question. Do you happen to know if if test kits are more readily available yet, or are we still in that?
I mean, for, for personal test kits?
Yeah.
I think they're a little bit more available. I've heard some people that you can sort of buy thirty at a time online, so that, you know, I don't know how feasible that is for people. So that it is something, you know, that from the federal level, they've been really wanting to get those kits in the hands of individuals. It hasn't quite made it, I think, down to the actual local level. And we've been, you know, kind of talking to OHA about it, but they don't have any necessarily resources. Ideally, yeah, that would be something that would be available. So so everyone would have access if they wanted it.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's all that I have. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Kramer?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. You've pretty much summed it up. And you know, what used to take us an hour or plus to get through, I think the fourteen minutes that we've spent this morning are very valuable. But I think, as you've stated, sounds like things are getting better. So thank you much for your report and all the work that you do.
Sure.
Thanks, Steve. So quick couple of questions I had. One was back to the herd immunity that Commissioner Schwartz had mentioned. The different elements on there, one of them, I think, was infected people, right? So those are the people that have gotten COVID. So that, and there's been obviously a lot of discussion about this whole, like, well, if I've been infected, I don't need to get vaccinated. And looking at that slide, it it kind of infers that, that they're, they're one of the class that would be in this kind of already whatever. I don't say protected, but is that, is that accurate to think of it like that? Because I've heard like this controversy over if you've gotten COVID, you have your immunity, and then you don't necessarily need the vaccination, or what's that all about?
Right, right. No, that's a really great question. And the reality is, you, people can certainly have COVID more than once. All right, so it is, I mean, that's very clear. And either from having, you know, certainly as the Delta variant came through, many people who were not protected from having had a different variant previously, and depends on people's natural immunity, obviously. So it is not accurate to say if someone has had COVID once, then they have a lifetime immunity. I think it's pretty clear that, I mean, that may happen in, you know, individual circumstances, but we certainly can't say that as a blanket statement. So although, and you know, this is again, just kind of getting to that, who is susceptible? Because the more susceptible people there are, the more chance the virus has of spreading and of mutating and causing more trouble. So, you know, just trying to realistically look at the numbers, who's susceptible and who isn't. That's kind of why there's that, you know, the, the people who are, have been infected, and you know, and and the thing that happens with that number, it's not continuously increasing, because immunity wanes. If, you know, if over time, like that number would go up to, you know, whatever it would be. But you all, if you look on the graph, that, that sort of line as it goes across stays the same, because that's kind of how long people are anticipating lasting. In turn, at OHA, we consider someone, if they've gotten COVID nineteen, about ninety days before the possibility that they would be reinfected.
So it sounds, it sounds like, like the, your immunity wanes whether you're vaccinated or whether you've had COVID. I mean, there is some waning of.
Yes, and it would appear that natural, sort of natural immunity, if you've been infected, that that wanes more rapidly than vaccinated immunity.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one quick question, and it's primarily because it's so confusing sometimes. This is the issue of, what are the, what are the current mask guidelines, rules, whatever, like today? Because it just changed so much, and I'm like, well, so if I do this, do I have that and that? So what are the current rules?
So for right now, if a person is in a public space indoors, they should be masked. So that means that the grocery store, if you go into an insurance office, or you go, obviously, in any healthcare-related field, go get your eyes checked, people should be masked up. People in offices should, and you know, any indoor space, people should be masked up. If a person is outdoors, this is when it does, it's a little more a little bit more confusing. People who are outdoors but cannot be, remain socially distant, that's when people are encouraged to mask. So if you were to be, you know, I don't know, outdoors and at a concert or something like that, when people are really tightly packed in there, or maybe a sporting event, then the, you know, then the recommendation, the guidance is to stay masked.
Perfect. And it, it's, that's regardless of vaccination status, or whether you've been infected before, whatever, okay. For everybody. Okay.
That's correct.
Good. All right, that's all the questions I had. I didn't see any questions in the chat. Let me ask quickly, does anybody have a question out there that you want to unmute and ask Dr. McDonald? If you do, now is the perfect time to do that. I don't see anybody. All right. Thank you, Dr. McDonald. Thank you for being here. As Steve said, it's, it's still great to get this information. It's great. I mean, I think your point is that there's, what I'm thinking is, there's still a lot of COVID out there in our county. And, you know, I think our county has not really kind of dropped as much as the state has overall in other counties, for sure. So we would certainly encourage people to be aware of that and and do the right thing. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and we're going to pull the nine one one service agreement renewal off of the consent agenda, since Joe is here. And I'm going to go ahead and let Joe pop on. There he is. And why don't you just, just quickly, just give us an overview of what this is about? And then the commissioners, if we have questions, we can ask questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is just a renewal for a service agreement, for annual service agreement for our phone system. That's nine one one phone system and admin lines. This gets paid by the state of the nine one one state. We do not have to pay for this. We don't, we don't get reimbursed. It goes right to them. We just, I submitted this to make sure that the contract looked, it looked good. I have to sign it to approve it, and I just felt that the commissioners should look at it if we have any issues. But all it is is a a service agreement for yearly, and it gives us updates and stuff like that, that we can use on our, for maps and stuff like that on our phones.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. And and could you maybe just address, there was one thing in the memo here indicating that we had been using a certain provider, but we're moving to another provider? Can you just talk briefly about, because I know we've had some nine one one outages, and is this going to potentially address some of those?
Well, the mostly the nine one one outages have been the phone lines itself, where this agreement is for the phone equipment. We were going through CenturyLink, now Lumen, that's who we were going with. And now this agreement is for Day Wireless, which is, the contract is from Motorola, and and Day Wireless will handle the maintenance. The technician has already been here for Day Wireless and has done updates that we needed, that Lumen has not provided for us in like two to three years. So I felt that updates, sometimes they're updated six to six months or a year, and we weren't getting those done. And this company, Day Wireless, that we use a lot for all other radios and and stuff like that, I felt that they were the best one to give us good customer service and the updates that we, we really need.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joe? Thank you for being here, Joe. No questions. Okay. Do we want to keep that, just keep it on the consent agenda? I talked about moving it up, but I think the whole point here was Joe was here, and I want to make sure that there were questions he could address.
Yeah, it can just stay on the consent agenda. It's not even something you'll sign. Joe just signs off on it.
Perfect. If no other questions, thank you so much for being here, Joe. We appreciate the information, and of course, the work that you guys do. Please extend our thanks and appreciation to your staff as well.
All right. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
All right, take care. All right. Is Molly going to be here for this agreement, the juvenile crime prevention?
I expected her to be here, but it's possible she's not. This is
Oh, she will not be here.
It's basic services. It's an agreement that really doesn't change, except for the dollar amount. And so
Okay, well, I just, I wanted to get her on if she wanted to get out of here. So why don't we just go back to the discussion list? So the OIB recommendation. Kathy, Laura?
Um, so the OIB recommendation is for Jorge Baragon, who's, this would be a renewal for him. And I was contacted by Jessica Metta, who is the Executive Director for McAd. And they were very enthusiastic about his participation on that board, which approves loans locally. And so this is just a recommendation to the governor. The Board of County Commissioners does not make this appointment. It is a recommendation that you make to the governor for the reappointment.
All right, thank you very much. Questions on that? Jorge, if you know him, he's a wonderful person in our community that does so much for everybody, and this, I'm sure he has an amazing job serving here. So anybody want to make a most, or like, this is just a consensus for the letter?
Yes.
All right, any questions, comments? And if not, is everybody good with the letter? Comes up?
Good with the letter.
All right, so we're good. We got consensus on the letter, and thank you, Jorge, for serving. Okay, then we have the Juvenile Crime Prevention IGA, and as you just heard earlier, there it is. Anybody have any questions? We'll let Tyler take this one, if we have questions for him. And if not, we can take a motion.
Hang on one second, Scott. I'm trying to get caught up with you here.
Okay.
And I'm trying to log into a different meeting right now, so.
Oh, I know, yeah, so.
You needed?
No, 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 I'm sorry. I just was gonna, we, I think we're fine. I was just saying, if anybody had questions in the IGA, let's bring them out, and we'll get them answered one way or another. And if not, if there are no questions, I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the IGA one four six nine three between Wasco County and State of Oregon for juvenile crime prevention, basic services.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes, yes. All right, very good. Get that passed. All right, we're getting close here. We got a consent agenda with two pairs of minutes, September twenty-ninth and October sixth, and then the nine one one service agreement that we talked about earlier. So does anybody have any questions? Did you have any comments on the minutes? And if not, do we have a motion to proceed?
She muted herself.
I didn't get coffee this morning. This is going to be a problem.
It's a silent motion.
Yeah. I will move to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, second to approve this consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, Chair votes, yes. All right, that's proved as well. So we're done with all of our early items, and we have just a couple of minutes. And I thought I would just go quickly to public comments. So anybody that's joined us in the meeting today, if you have a comment that you want to make to the commission at this time, we have a couple of minutes. We can do that now. Hopefully, I will remember to get back to it later. But for folks that maybe joined us that can't stay with us for a long time, if you have a comment for the commission, now is the perfect time. And you're asked to unmute yourself and go ahead and give us some comments. And if not, you're going to have to listen to me read a long script as we start into our hearing process. Oh, there's a hand. Arthur. Go ahead.
Sorry, not exactly a member of the public. Arthur Smith, Public Works Director, Wasco County. So in September, I gave you an update that the Oregon Trail Rally had applied for their road rally permit in Wasco County. That was continued upon, you know, they had asked originally for four different routes. They have come back after doing their due diligence, have determined that the original three routes that they use around Dooper, where the people support it, they would like to permit those routes, but the additional route that was really not supported, they're going to drop that. So I am going to move forward with the permitting process for them on the three original routes, which is Starbout, Void Loop, and Deer Run. Again, it's based out of Dooper. They have a lot, still a lot of local support, and we'll go through the due diligence on that for insurance and their and all the, the traffic control and everything. Guys, wanted to give you guys an update, and that is still tentatively scheduled for November seventh. So anyway, just wanted to give you an update on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Arthur. We appreciate that. November seventh could be some very interesting weather. Debbie, did you have something?
I do. I just wanted to, and I've, I've mentioned this before, but I want to say it again, how, how much I appreciate the work of the county commissioners in helping our community work through COVID. You know, I know a lot of other communities have struggled, and I just think that the three of you have.